...for the October 18th, 2016 meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need a motion to approve the agenda?
We'll approve the agenda for the October 18th, 2016 American meeting. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor, vice and back.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here. Order to be consent agenda items.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here. Is public participation? There's no public participation. So we will mention the principal.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all tonight. My report will be fairly brief. In your packet is some enrollment information. I do want to make one correction on that. If you look at the 2016-17 September enrollment, that number of 1,859 includes both preschool and early childhood special ed. That number has not been included in the previous years. So if you take out early childhood and early childhood special ed and preschool students, our actual enrollment K-12 is 1796, which is down 66 students from the previous year. A lot of that, well, about half of that is due to a large class graduating and smaller class coming in and then the rest is just transfer situations. Any questions on the enrollment report? A couple other things that I have, just real quick. We've talked about the new Grab and Go breakfast option that we're going to provide for our middle school and high school students. The carts have been ordered. Cheryl did a good job of working with the salesperson and company that purchased the product that we'll be selling through Grab and Go carts. They are providing the two carts free of charge for this. So that's good. They're ordered. Hopefully they'll be here within the next couple of weeks. And as soon as we get those and have a day or two to get things up and going, then we'll start that. Start that program. Just as a reminder, for middle school age students, the Grab and Go breakfast will be available in the old middle school gym in the morning. For high school students, it will be available in the hall. So we hope that will increase participation. We know all the studies show that students that eat a good breakfast really basically have a better day. They perform better, they feel better, more alert. Attendance is better as well. So we're hoping that we can get those results and provide something that we want better kids. That's in the works. The only other thing I would mention, the high school is working with some students and faculty members to develop a logo, a dragon's logo for the school district. We've had a variety of things in the past. None of them were district approved, so we have all kinds of, different kinds of dragons in different places. So I talked to Mr. Haney about the possibility of him working with some students and maybe looking at some options and trying to come up with something that is, can be consistently used throughout the district. Their hope is that they can provide something for your consideration. So that's in the works. I know there's one in particular that's very different from the others, and we're just trying to kind of consolidate things. Looking forward to doing that. I will concede the rest of my time to the principal of course. I'm not sure who wants to go first.
Well, good evening, everyone. We've had a busy month since we saw you last. I'm going to start with something I did. I got to attend some professional development in Columbia with a guy named Tom Whitaker. The presentation was titled "What Great Principals Do Differently," and I was able to bring some of the information. We were there from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m., and it seemed like it went by like that because it was just so dynamic and so engaging and just topic after topic. I was continuously thinking in my mind I could take that back and implement it. I got to go do that. We've already been doing some stuff at the middle school to implement some of those things. I walked through his book, so I'm trying to read it, so I'm kind of jazzed. We had homecoming, it was great. Huge student and teacher participation. Monday, we had Come As You Are Day. Tuesday was Tie Day. We got a little confused. The committee said Tie Day, and I think our cheerleading sponsor thought like Tie Day. And the high school came in with Tie Day stuff, so we were a little off there, but we made it work. Wednesday was Favorite Animal Day. Thursday was Class Color Day. Friday was Freedom Night. Ms. Meyer and Ms. Rowland conducted interview testing for our sixth graders in social studies classes, September 26th to the 28th. Teachers turned in their student learning objectives. They got their objectives reset for this year, and they turned them in, got feedback from Ms. Giesler and myself, fixed any issues that they had with them and turned them in, so now they're ready to roll with student learning objectives for the semester. Ms. Giesler is a member of St. Jenny Road Runners, and she's attempting, that group is attempting to raise $10,000 for St. Jude. She's been running their half marathon. So a couple of our advisory teachers jumped on the board. Ms. Mertz left had a hat day. Students could wear hats for dollars. She collected some money. The fundraising activity that the students enjoyed the most was taping Ms. Giesler to the wall. I don't know if you guys have seen any of that. But it was purchase a strip of duct tape for 50 cents, or you could get three for a dollar. And most of them spent quite good money. We put her up on a box, and then they got to come in and tape her. You know, we had to modify her face. We wanted to put it on her head. But the picture was fantastic. We pulled the box out, and she was actually held to the wall. So we had a fantastic time. They raised about $182 selling duct tape. We also began a monthly challenge for our faculty. The challenge for August was to consider a variety of classroom arrangements, arranging your classroom, different modifications, and adjusting, not just the same thing every day, keeping the students on their toes, going in groups, and then splitting them up and going in triangles and just trying different things. So that was August. September's challenge was to implement optimal seating. I was in one Sunday morning working on some stuff, and Mr. Roth was pulling in lawn chairs and dragging them up to his class. Not just regular lawn chairs, but also had big fold-out lounge chairs. And so I think Mr. Olden brought in a bistro table, and he had some rolly chairs in there. We tried bouncy balls. And if you go into any class up in the middle school that's trying the optimal seating, it's kind of fun to watch because you've got three kids in the back bouncing on bouncy balls. You've got two kids sitting in lawn chairs up in front, you've got a kid on the floor, and they're all engaged, and they're doing what they need to be doing. That in addition to some stand-up desks. And the stand-up desks have this little bar on the bottom that the kids can drop their feet on, so kids that are fidgety can get up and stand there and still move while not struggling in class. So that's kind of cool. October's challenge is focused on poverty and how that impacts academic success. Ms. Giesler put together an article, and teachers are to read the article about poverty and how that impacts, and then apply it to an experience that they've had in class. And it's all about knowing the student's home life and what they're bringing, the baggage that they're bringing with them to school and how that impacts their work. And so when you learn the background and you're able to deal with a student knowing their background, it's much easier to understand why they might be struggling with this or that. So that's the October challenge. During the leadership meeting on October 7th, the high school shared and discussed the progress of their dragon fact program. We had several middle school teachers in there. I thought it was fantastic. I sat and listened most of the time. Mr. Haney shared his eight-week rotation with me, and my head about exploded because that is a lot of students to deal with, teachers to deal with. You have to make sure everybody's supervised. He did a great job with that. I couldn't wrap my head around it. So we started doing something similar but different at the middle school on a lower scale. They were able to explain it to us in a way that made sense. They're mentoring kids in the high school, and our teachers jumped on that immediately when they implemented that. So our tutoring program on Thursdays last year, Dragon Day tutoring would serve about 60 to 80 kids on average. Tutoring programs so far this year is serving 150-plus kids. I think we had about 183 kids in tutoring program. Teachers go in and grab them and pour where they need extra help. We're still working through that. It's still evolving, but I feel like we're impacting more students and getting them the help they need in areas. So I wanted to thank the high school teachers and people on the leadership committee for sharing all that information and helping to explain it to us. Attendance rate at parent-teacher conferences for us in the middle school has been falling recently. So in an attempt to engage more parents, advisory teachers were asked to call parents and invite them personally to parent-teacher conferences. Obviously, they couldn't reach them all, some of them didn't have answering issue, but they tried at least three times to contact parents and invite them. My whole parents that we had up here called and invited. I was, if my wife was. But I feel like that not only is a personal message to parents from teachers inviting them, it also is creating a positive contact. We're not calling them with a negative contact, hey, your son did this or this grade, or we're calling them saying, hey, why don't you come in? We'd be more than happy to talk to you. So I think that's positive. We held a book fair in the library this week. I think it's still going on. We had Career Week. That's still going on this week. October 7th was Shadow Day. Teachers dressed in their high school colors. Tuesday, Tuesday's today, teachers dressed in their extracurricular T-shirts. And today was Career Day. We had speakers come in, and students could sign up to see different speakers. We had Rob Zalkowski from the conservation department got to see part of this. We had, this year, Ms. Rowland tried a couple Skypes and brought people who couldn't make it in on the big screen, and they were able to interact with our kids. I think we had somebody from AT&T, I can't remember. Google, maybe, was the other one. Just various people from the community as well. We had a fitness person, I think, from Therapy Solutions in Perryville. I can't remember the rest of it. But students signed up for the ones that they wanted to go to, and I think they enjoy them all. Tomorrow will be What It Takes Day. Teachers are supposed to dress in their college shirt and jeans. We're also going to have Dr. Green, a first speaker, and we're going to have several people come there and we get to rotate and see all the speakers again. Thursday, they're taking a trip to Perryville, going to the Career Center. They always do a great job hosting us, and kids who might be on that path get to see what's available at Career Center in Perryville. Fall sports seasons are almost completed. Cross-country will finish this Saturday at Hercules. They had a fantastic year so far. Last year, we had one person on cross-country team. This year, we have 13. So Mr. Martin's been a great job with those kids, getting them to come out. He'll take it, doesn't matter if they look like runners or if they ran before, he'll take them. He does a great job. Football, seventh grade completed their season with a 4-2 record, and eighth grade had a 5-1 record. Volleyball, seventh graders improved tremendously and ended with a 4-5 record. The eighth grade went undefeated in the regular season, winning our home tournament without believing in a set. We also earned conference champion, the conference championship plaque, and took third in the conference tournament. Finally, before our feature staff teacher, I wanted to talk about our West County family. West County family was traveling back from Florida and was in an accident and lost their mother and father. There were two daughters in the car. I think Haley was 13, Sofia was eight. So they were in a hospital in Florida for quite a long time. Ms. Cherry and Ms. Odenmiller heard about that. The 13-year-old Haley was on the volleyball team. So they wanted to change their advisory project and do a fundraiser for them. So Mr. Haney was nice enough at the high school to hold a hat day for the high school. We held a pajama day at the middle school. And I wanted to give conference schools a ball, so I contacted Kevin Coffman at West County, asked him if it would be okay, if I contacted the other schools and asked them if they were going to do something as well. So we raised just over $1,700, almost $1,800 for that family. Teachers were asked to donate $10 to wear jeans for the week. Kids were asked to donate a dollar, and a lot of kids gave more. Conference schools raised a bunch of money. We presented, the conference schools presented Mr. Coffman with a check of just over $9,000. So we almost raised $1,000. And he held a dance. I think he had $3,000 or $4,000 more for that family. We wished them well. I think one of them's back, living with her uncle in West County, and they were trying to get the other one transported back. So our thoughts and prayers were out to them. That was a fantastic gesture by the conference schools to help that family. Our feature staff teacher this month for October is Rachel Haney. She tries hard to make connections with her students by giving them hugs on Friday and telling them how much she cares about them. She's tough on her students, but it's only because she cares that they really learn their content. She is fearless in the classroom and tries new things to help her students succeed. Ms. Haney always keeps the science department on track in a positive way. She always has a smile on her face, is positive and friendly to everyone. I personally appreciated her kindness, and she has made a huge impact in making me feel comfortable as a dragon. Thanks, Rachel, for being awesome.
Thank you. At Bloomstown Elementary, we've been busy. You'll see on the principal report, lots of MRI, MRTI meetings, and dentist programs, PTO meetings, and court visits, and that comes in in the highlights. We started the air program. Officer McCarthy is coming every Tuesday with the fifth grade. We had Picture Day on Constitution Day. We have four grades who have read the morning announcements about Constitution meetings. We have a new addition to our library. We now have a Lundy Rock Memorial. If you haven't been there, see, it's really cool. There's comfortable chairs, decorations, there's like a tag board where you can tag your favorite books and recommend them to other students. So it's really cool. Nice carpet, and kids always sit there. So we thank the Lundy Rock family for donating that. We also have a new memorial garden out front. If you haven't seen it yet, you should see it. It's a big rock area with a bench and plants for memorial for Lundy. On September 21st, we had third grade parent luncheon, grandparent day, and we had 83 grandparents come, and we only have like 47 third graders. So we have three more grandparents than kids. So it was an awesome turnout. Kindergarten went to Eckerd's Orchard in September. We had the homecoming assembly, the cheerleaders and band, and dancers came out. We had a PAT group connections meeting, and we had 22 families come out, or 13 families come out and 22 participating children. That was neat to see the little kids one way and doing different activities and getting ready for kindergarten. We had a teacher, Laura Wolk, got her second donor choose grant for alternate seating in the classroom this school year. She's got two grants this school year already. So that's amazing with her. Then we did the norm celebration of birthdays. We had leadership roles in place. Students were reading. People at the front door, we have them read announcements. We have them helping with cafeteria dinner. We did wall effening papers. We did highest attendance contest, and we did social awards for cafeteria dinner. Teacher of the Month was Tracy Roseon. She was recognized by Yiza Gross. She said that she's a great teacher, she relates well to her students, and they all enjoyed having her in the classroom. Barb Lurk was our staff of the month, and she was nominated by Sheldon Beattie. Says that she does her job wonderfully and is friendly to all the kids along the way. October 4th, we had a teacher night, and we earned $537. They said they had their record busiest hour from 4:00 to 5:00. So that was awesome. Thanks to all the parents that came out today. October 6th, we had our student leadership role kickoff assembly, and the students were really excited. Mr. Kingery, they viewed his Bloomstown Elementary song. All the students in the whole building learned a new song about Bloomstown, and that's going to be our song for the afternoon. And they sang that. The lighthouse team is made up of 11 teachers, and they all introduced new roles. There's things like world changers, planet protectors. There's office leaders, there's welcome leaders, and the kids had 17 different verbs to pick up. And today was our first day to try it, and they were so excited, and it went good. All the kids were excited. I talked to them a bunch of times, and they enjoyed it. October 8th, we had a talent show, which was amazing. We had 36 participants, and we had everything from Elvis and first majors to nolly grass to church singers to, I mean, we had burmages and cheers. It was just amazing. I'm always so impressed that those little parents and kids can get up there and sing onstage when I don't have time talking to them. So we had sort of 300 people. Oh, and we had film players, which was amazing. And I'm not going to announce the place where they're to go. October 14th, we had fire department came in and spoke to kindergarten and preschool, and they got to go out and see fire truck. And we did a fire drill in the fire room, and they surprised us and came in and set the fire through the wall. And we still escaped the building pretty quickly. So I was amazed at that, and they were very impressed with how quickly we got out of the building. And then they went down and spoke to fifth grade after that.
As always, Lauren, I collaborate a lot. So many of our things are similar, and we love that. Just the other day, a teacher said, I just can't ever remember a time like we celebrated each other in elementary or were on the same page. So we love that because it just keeps us all talking and picking up great stuff. We too continue, are continuing with our riding, riding hallways, doing work awards every Monday, birthdays being announced every morning and celebrated, and students leaving announcements. We've been all the way through the fifth and fourth grade every class, and now the third grade is meeting. So they've done an awesome job. We're still focusing on habit after meet and then adding other things that are important and need to be announced. They really, they're on this new kick of writing skits, and so there's a lot of cute role-playing skits going on, like how they're living the habits. So rather than just saying the habit, now they're sort of sharing out how they're living the habits at home and at school. So that's great. We have 23 new students this year, besides kindergarteners, of course. Kindergarteners are all new. Mrs. Frangier had her luncheons for a week, every grade level, every day, you know, first through fifth. So we had 23 new kids this year. We got to have a special lunch with Mrs. Frangier in her room. We had our student luncheon with Mrs. Gaddy and myself and Mrs. Frangier and myself and Mrs. Gaddy on the 4th of October, and every classroom, of course, has a best student of the month. October 7th and September 26th, we had the dentist in the building, great smiles, dentist offered two kids, and healthy smiles, dentist did shrines and varnishes. So we had a great turnout, and the kids loved it, and you know, they didn't see me any angst without going to see the dentist by the park. So that's great. We had little immunizations today, and I, there wasn't crying. We got through it, and yeah, the teachers are all down in that carpet hallways, and there was a lot of crying. I'm like, oh. Mostly before the shot, not after. But anyway, we had ours in title with family fun nights as well. On September 29th, the kindergarten did, and you give the mouse a cookie, and I did a read aloud, and they're literacy centers. And the third grade had their family fun night on October 4th, and they did a leader in meeting, and the kids did it all. I mean, they greeted the parents, they led presentations, they gave out snacks, they cleaned up afterwards, they did all the speaking. They were amazing. So they taught their parents the habits and led the whole thing. So they did a fabulous job. And kudos to the third grade teachers because they really prepared them. They did a lot of practice with public speaking and all those things. And the fun activity was Smolgin's generously donated like 4-inch ceramic tiles, and the kids and the teachers decoupaged the seven habits on in the special little attendance prize was a coaster. And so thanks to Smolgin for donating those to us. Our attendance continues to be fabulous. In September, we had 97% attendance in the building, and fourth grade was our overall winner with over 98% attendance. So we hope their health holds out, and that we keep having such great attendance. Teachers are writing students up for positive things in our building. We had eight positive office referrals, Nolly Grass, Nina Vaticum, Andrew Wolfe, Andrea DeGol, James and Allison Lauter, that are doing great things for the building. We also have, want to thank Countrymark for having the apples for kids program. We have families bringing in Countrymark receipts, and that's awesome because it's just a local thing, and we're so thankful that they're giving us opportunity, or some technology, pieces and some other things. And our box tub drive is going crazy great, and we'd like to recognize, we turned it into a family competition so that siblings don't have to even compete. So our family winners in September were Jenna Russell and Ethan Layton, and in second place, Mason and Kyle Lyle. And so families keep sending in box tubs. We also had Fire Safety Month in September. The fire department came today, the kindergarten are studying, fire trucks and smokehouse. And Thursday, the, what is it, Wednesday? Tomorrow, Thursday, these Thursday, the first graders take a trip down to the firehouse. Fifth grade had a fabulous day at the symphony today, the House of Money Hall, and then went and checked out the new Challenger Park on the way back into town, so they had a little extra time. And fourth grade had a great day at the St. Louis Art Museum in October, so we tried to post cultural events in early the year. We had a lighthouse training at Bloomstown Elementary on Monday. It was great. My lighthouse team and her left lighthouse team met with our trainer, and we came up with great ways to spirit shift throughout our journey. We too are including student-led teams and our planning our student kickoff assembly. And my lighthouse team is also focusing on a lot of building, some subtle building changes, lots of warm spaces, warm curtains, soft lighting, just a more welcoming and cozier place, alternative seating in classrooms. So maybe when you come by, you'll see some subtle little changes we keep building a little bit on each week. So we're geared up and ready for parent-teacher conferences on Thursday. We've been appreciating the bus drivers this week and thankful for them to get our kids back and forth every day from school and gave them some treats today. We too finished our interview testing. Our parent-teacher association is on fire. They have, keep doing so many fun things for our building. The next fun thing is a family shindig in November, and kind of to replace and have a fall activity, not a Halloween carnival, but something more just fall for families. And they had a big parent date night in September, and the kids sat, 103 kids, while the parents went out on a date. So that was just great. Everybody was on high blood pressure medicine. It was great. The kids had a lot of fun and raised a lot of money. They raised a lot of money, so it was fun. It was a win-win. Everybody, parents went out and kids had fun. We've been collaborating with the high school on some things. They came for spirit assembly and homecoming. We have lots of kid app teachers in the building. Almost everywhere you go, you can see a high school that are working with a child, and it's pretty awesome. NHS and students and kid care force on conferences. A dozen kids are going to come down and help watch students and siblings during conference time. We want to thank Nancy and Jason for giving our kindergarten first grade report cards online. They're digital for the first time ever. So the teachers are like, wow, this is so awesome. So they've been entering grades and entering digital report cards. And Officer Clark works and are willing to teach there to our fifth graders. Last but not least, our September feature teacher was Ms. Valerie Anshler. She's had some great, I wanted to say my colleagues, she did an amazing job taking care of me when I needed support. She wrote my lesson plans with the help of our whole first grade team and made sure that the staff had everything they needed for the week that I was out. And another colleague said, I have a kindergarten student that is reading way above grade level. Valerie willingly added him to one of her guided reading groups so that he could be challenged this year. She had never hesitated to add another student to her class and was so willing to do what it took to help a student out that wasn't even hers. Thank you for going above and beyond, Valerie. And our super staff member is Ms. Sue McLean. She was nominated because teachers and colleagues in the library at the spur of a moment were going to listen. with a list of books they buy to use in the classroom. Sue greets everyone with a smile and helping hand. She gets the books and delivers them to the rooms. Sue's the super staff, always smiling and helping the students and teachers locate books. We have many nominees. Also, Stacy Traulinger, Jo Wyler, Sarah Carlson, Lindsay O'Callaghan, Jerry Heselt, Julia Lutter, Kristi Clark, Stephanie Pebbleseizer, Tina Burley, Unraveling Bridge, Benny Naggar, and Julie Beckerman. So, we have a lot of great faculty, staff that may recognize that in each other and we're proud that they do. So, thanks.
I will be standing in for Chris Keating for the high school tonight. Addie Stegel was chosen as the target citizen. Kudos to Mr. Skyler Ogden, who was spotted cleaning up trash outside the comments area by the language hall. Thank you, Mr. Ogden. Kennedy Bowen from Musella Elementary and Tameisha Gadd were named to the right state students for October, so they will be honored during the ceremony on October twenty-fifth. The following students made all this choir, Sydney White, Lynn Schmidt, Seth Martin, and Grayne Wise. Stuko, led by Mrs. Nikki Reed and Mr. Kyle Weiss, did a wonderful job in hosting homecoming twenty sixteen. The spirit night festivities were a huge success. The intensity picked up a notch with the junior and senior product team's taking the field. The game went into overtime, but senior class gave them a dramatic homecoming. The twenty sixteen St. Genevieve homecoming break was winners. Fourth place, the senior class. Third, junior class. Second, freshman. And first, sophomore. Twenty sixteen homecoming came in the game for Heidi Finley and Addie Steel. In girls golf, we want to congratulate Madison Marouche for placing second individually of the girls' class home state championship. And congrats to Megan Salbiom for a great finish to her senior golf season team against the tournament. Congratulations to the boys' cross country team for winning both the NCAA conference meet and the patois Invitational. Special congratulations to Ben Naggar, Skyler Ogden, and Nathaniel Ogden for being all conference runners. Ben Naggar also took home the individual honor of conference champion. On the court side, Olivia Bryan was the NCAA individual conference champion. The boys went on to follow up their conference championship by winning their first ever to pronounce that, for the?
Forcha.
Forcha. Invitational. Just when I thought I'd ask that again, but I didn't understand. Okay. So, volleyball. The St. Genevieve volleyball team held their fifth annual volleyball parade here on October fourth. The team raised four hundred dollars to go toward the St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital Oncology Department. Hank Knight was a huge success, getting a big win against Farmington, capturing the NCAA conference title. Jenna Pappen and Vivian Vaughn attended the FELA showing leadership conference and they competed in visual communications. Jenna placed second and Vivian received first place. On September fourteenth, the SGHS SCC LA attended a Region Six workshop at West County High School. The students were introduced to their Region Six officers and got to meet many new people who share similar interests with them. The next event for SCC LA will be October twenty-third and twenty-fourth for the Region Six Conference head ceremony. SCC LA will continue its Thanksgiving dinner kit food drive this year. They will collect November fourth through the ninth at the start of sixth hour. Our goal for this project is for each fifth hour class to collect the items needed for one Thanksgiving dinner kit. When we reach our goal, over forty families in St. Genevieve County will have things they need for an incredible Thanksgiving dinner. Vivian Vaughn was among, yeah, one hundred and twenty members, officers, state advisors, and chapter advisors who convened in Washington DC for SCC LA Capitol Leadership Training. Attendees met with their representatives during visits on Capitol Hill to discuss purpose coming, FCS, and for best and CLA initiatives. Four members of the St. Genevieve FFA chapter competed in the state president contest in Ashland, Missouri under the supervision of Hannah Brishonstein and Melissa Spence. The team received fourth place in the district contest, which automatically qualified them for state competition. Now we have announcement for Veterans Day. On Thursday, November tenth, St. Genevieve middle school and high schools will be honoring veterans of our community for the luncheon and celebration at the Fanny J. Johnson's gymnasium. The event will start at one PM with a luncheon prepared and provided by the SCC LA organization at SGHS along with the health trumps and small local businesses. The meal will be served in the concession area of the gym. At two PM, student body of the middle school and high schools will assemble along the local veterans that are in attendance. There will be recognition of all local veterans that have lost, that we have lost in the past year and there will be a plan of tasks and free gun armor. We would like to invite all veterans and their families to attend and take part in this special event. No RSV is required. SGHS would like to thank all of our men and women who have worn the uniform, not only on this Veterans Day, but every day. Thank you. We would like, oh, let's, trick or treat for canned goods. On October twenty-seventh at six PM, many clubs and organizations at St. Genevieve High School will be participating in the annual trick or treat for canned goods throughout some of the neighborhoods in town. The event will serve the purpose to helping to stock the local food pantry before the holiday season. If you're in the neighborhoods of Rosier Edition, Valley Springs, St. Jude International, or Pier Market Park, students will be coming door-to-door and Halloween costumes, picking up canned goods from residents who choose to participate. We hope they are able to provide some non-perishable food for some of our neighbors in the neighborhood. The St. Genevieve High School chapter of National Honor Society held this annual induction ceremony on Sunday, October ninth. The keynote speaker was Dr. Fordy Quan, inspired the new inductees. Established members and audience with remarks regarding the NHS ideals of scholarship, leadership, service, and character. President Madison Reynolds then presided over the induction of the new eighteen members. The sponsors, Mr. Christian Google and Michael Broke, congratulated the new members and thanked the parents, the school, and community for their ongoing support to the National Honor Society. On Friday, October seventh, the twenty sixteen Hall of Fame inductees were Dr. Joel Eisenberg, Ms. Lorraine Strange, and Mr. Charles Reimler. And their families gathered at the SGHS for the annual induction ceremonies. Special congratulations to the induction class of twenty sixteen and to Mr. Mark Pope for his hard work and dedication to Halloween. Mrs. Teenhaw, who already did another successful kickoff to college PETA SGHS. The week featured on Modern Monday as journey college activities started. Other activities included open lab in the library media center on Wednesday, October seventh, and college fair on Thursday, October eighth. Mrs. Robinson, the ninth grade health teacher, had four classes came up by donating for the middle school, super school, Beth Peeler, and her running team for the St. Genevieve Road Runners. Four health classes participated and we raised a total of a hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty five cents for the cost. This Saturday, we have the privilege of hosting thirty area high school bands at our ninth annual St. Genevieve Marching Band Festival. If you want to see some really great marching bands, consider coming out as a spectator. Events start at two PM. We also received a one thousand six hundred and fifteen dollar grant for the Jelly Good Conspiracy for our dedication and desire to include students with special needs and in arts. And for that event this year, we're inviting all schools and NCAA conferences. So, we're excited about that grant. Finally, congratulations to Mr. Chris Keating, president-elect of the Missouri Association Secondary School Principals.
Now we'll move on to unfinished business, instructional program presentation, middle school party.
Oh, is that me? Okay. Everybody, I think everybody knows me. Come on in, Mark. Okay, I'm Mr. Otto. I've been teaching here for a long time. Sorry, Terry. So, talk about the middle school curriculum. I teach four classes at the middle school and I teach one class at the high school. I teach sixth grade exploratory art, which is an exploratory class. We do a bunch of different small projects to get them experience in a whole lot of different areas. And we do a lot of drawing practice to help them in later classes. I have a selection of work here that is typical of the middle school. I also teach one high school class, which I will not be covering because that's James' joke. So, I'd like to show you a few of these and then I'll discuss the projects for my classes. The middle school art program is based on, is project-based in all of our grading and covering all of our objectives. What that means is we do have a couple formalized tests for slows, but for the most part, all of their assessment is their actual production of artwork that they do. Now, I don't hear the middle school art program towards producing works of art or things that would be entered in an art show, although many of the pieces of the artwork that they do are outstanding. But they're mostly learning exercises to help them if they should pursue art later on in their education. So, these are etchings, right? Etchings are, they get a pre-inked board and this board is a, is covered in a foil, but it has an ink sprayed over the top of it. And they have to use a very sharp stylus called a diamond point stylus to remove the black ink and leave the foil underneath without scratching through it. It's a very difficult project for anyone to grasp the first time they try doing it because we're all so accustomed to working on a light background with dark instruments. But this is reversed, so generally, every student has to have two of these. The first one doesn't make it and then the next one, they finally get what's going on. But they have to scratch away the highlights and leave all of the dark areas. And I did that. This is fairly typical of this school's work. And they, you know, I used to, I used to have whiteboard that had ink sprayed on it, but then I, they accidentally sent me a package that had gold foil under it and the kids fought over it so much that I just ordered the gold foil.
Pass it over.
Yeah, pass it over. Okay. This is human, now, these are not in any order according to what classes I teach. I'll read off a list of the projects that I do to cover all of my objectives. The, I wrote the curriculum when I moved to the middle school nine years ago and then it's gone through many revisions and it's been migrated into different formats and now it's all on the Google Drive and it has all the slows attached to it and it has all the GLEs and all the strands from Missouri frameworks all incorporated into it. So, what I did was I, was I designed projects that would cover as many objectives as possible. And when I read the list of projects off to you, you're going to think that there's absolutely no way we could cover all of that in one semester. But we keep snapping along as we go and we may miss one project now and again, but for the most part, I cover all of the projects that I read off later. These are human figure drawings that I do with my Art Two class. And we select students and each day, we choose different students. We put aside a week to do this and they break and we, and I teach two different techniques for human figure drawing, geometric-based and skeletal-based. And we take turns drawing each other. I put them up on the tables, on chairs, and everybody sits in a big circle and they only get twenty minutes to do a drawing. And they aren't allowed to erase anything. And sometimes I make them use a marker and there's much, there's much teeth gnashing going on during that. So, I pass those around. Many of them don't have faces because that's not what we're working on at that time. We do facial proportion also, but in human figure drawing, I'm not so concerned about the faces as I am getting the proportion of the, of the human form. These are high contrast drawings. We do a lot of shading and drawing practice, blended shading and tonal shading and working on medium value paper with lights and darks to show contrast. This is just some examples that I did for them. Each time a class would come in, I'd show them what I was talking about. So, I have tons of these that I do as demonstrations during class. So, that's just a, I call those twisted doodles. Then this, these are student work. So, these are blending colored pencil to show high contrast. And we choose different subjects. I did that. We start out with basic geometric shapes and then they build off of those. And they do blended shading and tonal shading on them. And some of these are just outstanding for middle school. So, my Art Two students do two-point interior perspective, two-point exterior perspective, and one-point normal perspective. And for the two-point perspective projects, they, I have, we walked around town one semester with a digital camera and took pictures of all the historic homes and I had technology print me a bunch of sheets of them. They can select one of the historic homes from St. Genevieve and they have to turn it into a two-point linear perspective drawing and then they use a steel pen and ink on it because that's the only type of ink you can use that you can do a watercolor washover in a Monopoly. And then they do a watercolor washover it so like there's the same chemical thing. And here's the valley house up there. And here is another. And here is the Southern Hotel. So, that's a two-point exterior perspective drawing. The graphic teacher at the high school tells me that he, he has seen a tremendous increase in how well they see things three dimensionally. I think that's a very important thing for us to cover. We spend a lot of time covering linear perspective, one-point and two-point. They also have to do normal symmetry and they have to do radial symmetry at the middle school level. This is an example of radial symmetry where they have to divide a circle into eight parts and then they design one of those parts with some sort of non-objective design and then they transfer that image to the other seven sections. And then they use colored pencils or watercolor paint or whatever to color in those areas. So, that's radial symmetry. We do that for a project. We do, I'll just give you one. We do tessellations, which is mathematically based. At one grade level, we do translation tessellation, which means the shapes are just going straight across and up and down. And at the Art Two level, we do rotation tessellations, which spin around in a radial pattern. And if you don't know what a tessellation is, a tessellation is a repeating geometric shape that uses all available space. So, there's a technique that we use for doing this that I used my wife and daughters for getting gigs when I first started teaching that lesson. My wife was absolutely adamant that she was going to create a witch and I said, "That's not how this works." You make the, you make the object and then you find what's in the object. You don't decide what you're going to make ahead of time. It doesn't work that way. So, after about seventeen tessellations, she finally cut one out that looked like a witch. That she had to put her ear on. This is a two-point robot. We do two-point perspective robot in Art One. We do a two-point perspective historic home in Art Two. So, this is a two-point historic, I mean, two-point robot. These are interior perspective designs. These are what are really outstanding. I really love it when they do these. This is the corner of my classroom that a middle schooler drew in two-point interior perspective. And that, and if any of you have ever tried to do this, drawing a shelf, that shelf in the back of my room that has eighteen individual shelves on it in two-point perspective is a, is a chore in itself. Here's a demonstration I did of the Southern Hotel when we're working. I do, I do the same projects that they do with them so that they know I'm not afraid to do it and they also have a little bit more respect for their teacher when they see that their teacher can actually be what their teacher's asking them to do. And then they don't have any qualms about coming up and asking me to help them or even do it for them if I will. So, here's some more interior perspective of my classroom. We do some other projects. This is, some of the projects, I keep the same every year. Some of them, as long as I cover all of the objectives, I can change the projects as long as they still cover the same objectives. This is one that we've been doing for several years. This is a multimedia project that my Art One students do and if they didn't have Art One, like if they moved into the district and they suddenly take Art Two and they didn't have Art One, they're very disgusted that they don't get to do the album cover design because they missed Art One, all right? And that's where we do album cover design. So, this is a multimedia project. I set up a digital camera in my classroom with an umbrella and we take professional portraits of each one of the students. And then we put them in a, we don't have programs for everybody to do it, so they come around my computer and I show them how to do it. I put their pictures in Photoshop. I put their pictures in Photoshop. I take the shadows all the way up. I take all of the highlights all the way down, and I change the threshold setting. But I don't have to do all that because I wrote an action for it. But I show the students how to do that if they wanted to do that. And then I hit the action button. It does all that stuff to the photograph and turns it into a black and white, what they call a line art image. And then I send a flash drive down to the tech department with like a hundred and thirty pictures on it, and Jason prints them all out for me on the laser printer and sends them up to my classroom. So they all have their portrait sitting in front of them. They do a graphite transfer of that portrait onto a piece of heavy watercolor paper. And then they transfer everything that they think is dark enough that they want on their image by pressing the graphite off the back of their paper with a ballpoint pen on the front of their paper. So all the graphite that they rub on the back of their picture gets transferred onto their watercolor paper. It's a technique that artists have used for centuries. It's like a copy machine, but it's manual. And they run all, they run all that, all the stuff that they want in their photo onto their paper. And then they use a steel pen, they call them Harry Potter pens, but they're not confederate letters, they're steel pens. And they dip them in a bottle of ink just like the old-fashioned way, and they ink everything that's going to be completely black on their picture. And when they're done with that, they have to either put their name on it in hand lettering or a motto or some sort of appropriate thing that they can write on there. All right? And then they ink it. They hand ink it, and then they do a watercolor washover. This is one that was just done last week. So these are excellent, and they love these. These are mosaics that I've had done in the past. And I, I have about, I don't know, five different families that collect magazines for me, and they show up at my door in, in Walmart bags. And, and I've got like two giant shelves in my room full of magazines. Every little piece of paper on here, they selected from a page in a magazine and cut it. And none of the pieces are supposed to be bigger than a quarter inch by a quarter inch, but I've got a lot of cheaters. And, and then they put these pieces on here. They usually only get about a third of these done during class, and then they take a giant envelope home full of confetti and drive their parents crazy, and they finish these and bring them back. So they get till the end of the quarter to turn these in for their grade. But we don't have the time to spend in class to spend two or three weeks gluing little dots of paper on. So I don't do very much homework, but a few of these projects will require some homework. So here's some others. Some of them are done around Halloween. I don't, I don't, you know, try to make them do the crazy looking ones because of Halloween. And we do different themes, different semesters. Like one semester, we did a dragon theme, and they all did different dragons. And like, Jesus, this is so cute. Here's another dragon here. I'll just give you this stack. Here's some tessellations that they did. This is a translation tessellation. Here's another. Just some more tessellations. Okay, uh, my Art Two students are currently working on self-portraits. And what we do with them is, again, when I'm taking pictures with the kids for their album covers, I take pictures of my Art Two students, and they have to do a value study of their face. And they increase it two hundred percent. So it's a mathematical formula. It's a very simple mathematical formula. They've got half-inch squares on the drawing that I give them. I wrote up an action in Photoshop. I import their photos. It drops a half-inch grid on their photo. Jason prints them for me, sends them to me. Then they get a big sheet of heavy paper out of my cabinet, and they draw a one-inch, perfect one-inch grid on that paper. And that is, you'd be surprised how difficult it is to get an entire class to do a perfect one-inch grid on their paper. It doesn't matter if you nail the yardsticks down on the table, it would still move on them when they're trying to draw those long lines. But eventually, they all get a good grid, and then they do a value study. They look at the center, the square that has the eyeball in it, and they try to match that square on their big sheet of paper with just regular office pencils. And that's these right here. It's the same, this is another project we do. This is a, Art One does, finds a picture in a magazine that they can do a value study of. And this is a scale drawing I did with them when they were doing theirs. This is from a magazine. And then this is the one I did with them this year. I did this one last week while they were working on theirs of me. So we do the value study, which their, their abilities to shade increase exponentially over that project, right? And they use, every one of them is so completely different when they're done that you'd think they were all in different classes. But they all get the same, they all, you know, achieve the same goal in the end. I'll wrap this up for you. My exploratory class does ten projects. Story illustrations, one-point perspective, two-point perspective, two-point interior, bi-quad symmetry, paper sculptures. I didn't bring any of my cultural masks. We do cultural mask making. We do superhero and villain masks. And we also do, um, exquisite little finger puppets, all out of paper, out of construction paper. So that's, that's a little noted thing. Also, I didn't bring any of our soap carvings because we haven't done those in a couple of semesters. It's a nightmare. But we do, uh, if we, if we get through all of our projects, my Art Two students carve soap. And we've had some excellent soap carvings through the years. They also do the color wheel project. We do a color unit. They do 3D shading, blending, and tonal. And then they do an analysis and a critique, uh, and peer critiques of other students' works. All right? Art One is seventh and eighth grade mixed. They do one-point, two-point, and two-point interior, radial symmetry, paper sculptures. At that level, they do cultural mask, and they have to select a, a specific mask. They go, we do a search online where they have to set up a file structure in their Chromebook with five different cultures, and they go out on the internet, and they find ten different masks that they like from that culture and put them all in their Chromebook. And they all compare them with each other. And they pick out their favorite culture and their favorite mask from that culture, and they try to recreate it three dimensionally with construction paper. And we create cultural masks. We, we do the same thing in Art Two, but we do heroes and villains. So they do like comic book characters. And then my, uh, exploratory class does finger puppets. So translations, tessellations, human facial proportions, etchings with stylus, album covers, and aesthetics assignment, all right? And then Art Two does two-point perspective historic homes, seal pen with watercolor, self-portraits, large sixteen by twenty paper sculptures, villain superhero masks, mosaics, rotation tessellations, human figure drawings, analysis, critique, and aesthetics, and possibly soap carvings. And then we have my additional class, which is my design class. And the design class is the class that is paired up with the drama class. And the design class is responsible for supporting and creating all of the sets for the St. Genevieve Middle School Drama Class. So we build everything and create everything and, uh, support the event, the night of, and the dress rehearsal for the middle school plays. And you will find us most of the time, when the weather's decent, down at the basement of the pack, building, painting flats, uh, building steps, building stairs for the stage, and, um, organizing down there because Lord knows it needs it down there because with, with the high school class and the middle school class working in there, we're constantly having to move stuff and get rid of stuff and file stuff away and drag stuff back out. So they do a lot of that stuff. But they do all the advertising. We do the sandwich signs or the sidewalk sandwich signs for in front of our Zuko's. Some of them will weave vinyl. I cut vinyl at home, and we just update the signs each semester. Some of them will be weaving vinyl. Some of them will be applying vinyl to the old signs. Some of them remove the old vinyl. They do posters for the building and have Mr. Taylor okay all the posters. We build, uh, props for all the characters that need it. We help with costuming, and we help with makeup, and we pass out programs, and we have people on the curtains, and we have people on the sound, and we have people on the lights. And that's what my class does every semester for design. So that wraps it up. Thank you.
One of the things that, that I liked about what he was just talking about was the integration of art into other things like local, local history, the mathematics beast, the other cultures. I, I think that's important that those get linked together.
Those homes are amazing.
We've had a lot, you know what, over the last couple of years, so many of the other teachers in the building are constantly sending kids down to my room for supplies to do artwork for their rooms, you know? And, and, and the kids automatically tell their teacher, the teacher says, "You know what? We really need something on the wall right now. Go down and Mr. I'll, Mr. I know where all the stuff is. I know where all the stuff is. I'll go down and Mr. I'll." So they come down and tell me what they're gonna make, and we set them up, so.
Thank you. So we shall begin with the first question.
I move to the Board of Education of the closed meeting with a closed record and closed vote following the regular open meeting on November fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen to hold in the R W Columbus Library, 715 Washington Street, St. Genevieve, Missouri for the purposes of discussing and building upon the following items listed. Legal actions, cause of action, or litigation. Please purchase our sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting particular employees, proceedings involving the mental or physical health of an identifiable individual, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals, testing and examination materials, welfare cases of identified individuals, preparation for negotiation with employee groups, software codes for electronic data processing and documentation thereof, specification for competitive bidding until approved or belated, sealed via the related documents till the bid are opened, sealed proposals and related documents, and all proposed or rejected, or any documents related to a negotiated contract until the contract is executed, individually identified personnel records, performance ratings, or records contained to employees or applicants for employment, records protected from disclosure by law, scientific and technological innovations in which the owner had proprietary interest, records related to municipal hotlines established for reporting abuse and wrongdoing, confidential or privileged communications with an auditor, operational guidelines, policy with specific response plans for responding or responding to a critical incident, existing or proposed security systems and structural plans of district property, proportion of record that identifies security systems or access codes, records that identify or would allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption to configuration of components or the operation of computer, computer system, computer network, telecommunications network, credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and virtual keys, access codes, or authorization codes for use to protect electronic transactions. I further move the notice of this meeting and this tentative adjutant be posted as required by law. Sir. Motion second. voca, Ray Pausser?
Yes.
Boga?
Yes.
Ondante?
Yes.
Hipkurtur?
Yes.
And we ask, what are we singer?
Yes.
Repudlock?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven of them.
Move to go to a closed session with a closed record and a closed vote after a short break.